I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common sense.
Effective September 1, 1991, Chapter 9 of the laws of 1999 requires that we inform persons other than students who attend meetings within a school of the proper procedures to evacuate a building in an orderly and timely manner in the event of a fire emergency. If you must evacuate this room because of an emergency, please exit through the doors located at the north side of the gym, turn left, and proceed directly to the outside, or you may use the door located in the northwest corner and proceed directly outside of the district office.
Good morning. The annual election of members of the Board of Education of the Baldwin Union Free School District was held on May 17, 2022. One full three-year term was filled, I mean two, correction. Petitions were received from the following candidates: Susan Coles, Thomas Smith. The vote was as follows: Susan Coles, 1,016, yes; Thomas Smith, 876, yes. Susan Coles and Thomas Smith were declared elected to serve three-year terms commencing July 1, 2022, and expiring on June 30, 2025.
So Mrs. Pratt will do the oath of office?
I am going to reappoint positions.
Let's swear them in first.
Got it. Thank you. Please raise your, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Thomas Smith--
Aye, Thomas Smith.
--being duly sworn--
Being duly sworn.
--depose and say as follows--
Depose and say as follows.
I do solemnly swear--
I do solemnly swear.
--that I will support the Constitution of the United States--
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
--and the Constitution of the State of New York--
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
--and that I will faithfully discharge the duties--
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
--as trustee of the Board of Education--
As trustee of the Board of Education.
--of the Baldwin Union Free School District--
Of the Baldwin Union Free School District.
--according to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. I, Susan Coles--
I, Susan Coles.
--being duly sworn--
Being duly sworn.
--depose and say as follows--
Depose and say as follows.
I do solemnly swear--
I do solemnly swear.
--that I will support the Constitution of the United States--
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
--and the Constitution of the State of New York--
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
--and that I will faithfully discharge the duties--
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
--as trustee of the Board of Education--
As trustee of the Board of Education.
--of the Baldwin Union Free School District--
Of the Baldwin Union Free School District.
--according to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Do we have a nomination for president of the Board of Education?
So moved. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm so used to moving. So I'd like to move, or motion that Susan Coles be elected as the president of the Board of--
Do I have a second?
--the President of the Board.
Second? Are there any other nominations for president?
Nope.
So Mrs. Coles has been nominated first and second for president of the Board of Education. Can I have a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, Mrs. Coles, you are the president. I am proud to hand the gavel over. Can I get a nomination for vice president?
I would like to nominate Tom Smith as vice president.
Second? Second for Mrs. Dreschka. Are there any other nominations? All those in favor? So moved. Congratulations, Mr. Smith. Okay, so now we have to do the oath of office again, right?
Raise your right hand. I, Susan Coles--
I, Susan Coles.
--being duly sworn--
Being duly sworn.
--depose and say as follows--
Depose and say as follows.
I do solemnly swear--
I do solemnly swear.
--that I will support the Constitution of the United States--
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
--and the Constitution of the State of New York--
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
--and that I will faithfully discharge the duties--
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
--as president of the Board of Education--
As president of the Board of Education.
--of the Baldwin Union Free School District--
Of the Baldwin Union Free School District.
--according to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
I, Thomas Smith.
--being duly sworn--
Being duly sworn.
--depose and say as follows--
Depose and say as follows.
I do solemnly swear--
I do solemnly swear.
--that I will support the Constitution--
That I will support the Constitution.
--of the United States--
Of the United States.
--and the Constitution of the State of New York--
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
--and that I will faithfully discharge the duties--
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
--as vice president--
As vice president.
--of the Board of Education--
Of the Board of Education.
--of the Baldwin Union Free School District--
Of the Baldwin Union Free School District.
--according to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Okay, so another year begun, because this is kind of where we start, hence our organization at our July meeting. The Board of Education approves the personal actions report dated July 1, 2022, as addended and detailed in the mailing. So moved. Moved by Mrs. Reed.
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, Dr. Kami?
So as a result of that vote on the personal actions report, it, I would like to introduce some new members of our Baldwin family. Prior to doing that, though, I would like to just make sure everybody understands process. We received notification of members of our administrative team who had decided to apply for promotions to other school districts. And so we had the task of filling some very big shoes. The process that we follow in Baldwin is a pretty arduous process. It starts with advertising. Everywhere that we know, people look for positions. And so it is on Recruit Front, it is on OLS. We contact HBCUs, we contact all of our local colleges, Queens College, Brooklyn College, all of the places that we know have leadership programs. We contact our colleagues from across other districts in Nassau, Suffolk, and Westchester Counties, so that there is a wide net that is cast, particularly for positions such as principal. Once those advertisements go out, we then start collecting resumes. The resumes are screened. There are initial screening interviews that's conducted by Dr. Gallo. Based on those screening interviews, a number of candidates are brought back, and they meet with Dr. Gallo and myself. That group then goes to a committee. That committee consists of parents, clerical staff, teachers, custodial staff, other administrators, and, and, and the people that are chosen to be on those committees are designated by the PTA and by the different unions in our school district. Based on the feedback, those are feedback committees, based on the feedback of those committees, a select number will come back and interview with our cabinet, and that's Dr. Gallo, Dr. Robinson, Mr. Maniella, and myself. Based on that, we have a group of people who will meet with the Board of Education. And based after that, they, there are reference checks that are done, which by the way, in our experience, are not done in many places any longer. We do thorough reference checks, we do writing samples, and we have multiple other things that, that we all will look at before we identify which candidates will be recommended on a personnel actions report for those positions. Having gone through that whole process, the Board just approved the appointment of four principals, four elementary principals, to our school district. They are all here today, and what I would like to do is read to you their, their statement of, we asked them, you know, tell us what you want our community to know about you. And so I would like to share with you what was shared with us. And then we are going to take a short break, maybe a 10-minute break, so that the different communities can meet the new principals and greet them in the warmest Baldwin way. So let me start with the new principal for Brookside. The new principal for Brookside, and I'll ask you to just stand, wave, and then you can sit. You don't have to stay standing. But the new principal for Brookside is Anne Marie Scutcherini. Yes. You tapped into the Italian side of me with the scut, and I had to remember that. There is no Italian side of me, just so you know. Anne Marie Scutcherini joined our Baldwin family last school year as the assistant principal of Plaza School. During that time, she formed indelible relationships and worked closely with administration, staff, and families to create positive and enriching learning experience for our students. Prior to coming to Baldwin, Mrs. Scutcherini served as a teacher leader in a previous school system in New York City. Her 20-year tenure as an educator included teaching diverse learners in first, second, and fourth grades, and mentoring teachers in best practices for literacy instruction. Mrs. Skur, oh God, it's just, Scutcherini is thrilled to continue her professional journey in Baldwin as the newly appointed principal of Brookside. She shared, "I look forward to meeting with school community and working collaboratively with them to grow our learners into future leaders." She has provided dates for, which has gone out to the Brookside families, for meet and greets to get to know her, three different dates over the course of the summer. So you will have plenty of opportunity to do that. So please help me in welcoming Mrs. Scutcherini to Brookside. Lennox.
So the new principal for Lennox School is Dr. Jefferson Isaac. This is Dr. Jefferson. Dr. Jefferson Isaac is no stranger to our school community, as her two children attended Baldwin schools, graduated from Baldwin High School in 2016 and 2021. As a parent, she was actively involved in various PTAs and community organizations. Dr. Jefferson Isaac believes in empowering teachers to create student-centered learning environments that foster independence, creativity, confidence, and critical thinking. Her favorite motto and social media hashtag, hashtag "learning is joyful," I'm good with that, by the way, reminds us that schools should be filled with joyful learning experiences that help children reach their highest potential. She is excited to join Lennox and looks forward to meeting families, faculty, and staff, and of course, our students. Please welcome Dr. Jefferson Isaac. So the new principal for Steele School is Navia Paz. Will you please stand? She is an experienced leader, educator, and mother of two amazing children. I have not met her children. She describes them as amazing, and I have to believe you. She enjoys being hands-on when supporting teachers, students, and families, believes that all students learn at their own pace, and that individualizing the approach to learning best supports the needs of their personal success. Driven by a positive mindset, she encourages students, teachers, and families to see things using the "not yet" versus "can't" stance. Her goal is to encourage students to love learnings, looks forward to coming to school where they feel respected, supported, and loved, and important. She is a firm believer in the human aspect of teaching and learning and ensuring the mental, emotional, and social well-being of students, teachers, and families so that learning can take place. All students can and will learn always. Please join me in welcoming Mrs. Paz. And finally, for Meadow School, I am honored to share Dr. Yolanda Martin.
Dr. Martin says, "I am honored to serve the Baldwin School District, to have the opportunity to lead in a community that values academic excellence, strong family engagement, and inclusivity. I come to you as having dedicated my career to public education as a classroom teacher, school leader, and district leader. I am now eager and, and to dedicate my skills and passion for learning, to serve the Baldwin School District as the new principal of Meadow Elementary School. I look forward to working with the entire school community, community to continue ensuring that all students are learning at high levels in a safe, nurturing, loving, and inclusive school community. Together, we will lead, learn, and serve the children, and that is our first agenda." Please help me in welcoming Dr. Martin.
So what I would like to do is to give you all some time to meet our newest principals, and here's how I would like to do it. If you wouldn't mind, we will have Meadow come near the speaker, Steele in the back, Brookside in that back corner. What am I, Brookside, right?
Brookside, you just put in that corner, Lennox.
Lennox, and Lennox, near our Lennox PTA, right here, by the Baldwin Bee. How's that? We will break for, till 20 minutes to 10, which is about 12, or 13, or 15 minutes. Is that good? All righty.
So I'm going to ask the four new principals if they would please go with Dr. Gallo. She is going to give you a lot of information. I want to thank our parents for coming out and being so warm and welcoming to our new principals. We need to continue on with our reorg meeting, so Mrs. Coles, that's your job.
Okay, so I hope everybody is happy. We're very happy. And I hope everybody will take, you know, some time to really get to know the new principals and have some great conversations, and we very much look forward to the year to come. So as board president, I'm calling for consideration of a consent agenda for the reorganization items nine through 24. These items will still be read out loud. Are there any items that members would care to withdraw from consideration under the consent agenda for further discussion in a separate vote? Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, including reorganization items nine through 24?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Reed. Nine through 24, okay. Seconded by?
Mrs. O'Hagan. Mrs. O'Hagan, second.
Oh, did you?
I did.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay. Seconded by Mrs. O'Hagan. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Do I have a motion to approve reorganization items nine through 24? Moved by Mr. Smith. Seconded by Mrs. Dreska. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So moved. Okay. So the school district appointments for 2022-2023 school year are as follows. District Council: Ingraham &amp; Smith LLP, Hawkins, Delafield &amp; Wood, Lewis, Brisbos, Bisguard &amp; Smith LLP. District Clerk: Pamela M. Pratt. Acting District Clerk: Sarah Petrone &amp; Pat Anderson. External Auditor: Colin Antonowski LLP. Claims Auditor: Sereni &amp; Associates LLP. Internal Auditor: Noraki Smith. School Physician: Dr. Sue Ann Kowal Connolly. Civil Service Coordinator: Dr. Michelle Gallo. Title IX Compliance Officer: Dr. Michelle Gallo. Sexual Harassment Compliance Officers: Dr. Michelle Gallo Officer, Dr. Arlene Guerrero High School. Coordinator: Laura Buckley Middle School Coordinator. So is there not a coordinator? Share, are we missing one or? Okay. Records Access Management Officer: Dr. James P. Robinson. Assistant Records Access Management Officer: Pamela M. Pratt. Health and Safety Officer: Russ Randazzo. Asbestos Designee: Russ Randazzo. Committees and Subcommittee on Special Education and Preschool Special Education and Surrogate Parents. Impartial Hearing Officers. Okay, okay. Section 504 Coordinator: Sharice Young and Dr. Michelle Gallo. Compliance Coordinator for ADA: Sharice Young. Census Enumerator: Sharice Young. Attendance Officer: Sharice Young. Central Treasurer Student Activities for the Middle School: Michelle Lippi. Central Treasurer Student Activities High School: Patricia Sisco. Chemical Hygiene Officer: Lauren McCarthy. Control Officer for Bloodborne Pathogens: Dr. Taishan Scarlett. Designated Educational Official: Sharice Young. Digital Privacy Officer: Anthony Manella. Register Our Appointments for the 2022-2023 School Year. The Baldwin Union Free School District Board of Education designates secretaries in each of the school, each of the district schools and the district office as deputy registrars to register qualified voters in the buildings of the district from July 1, 2021, through June 30, 2022. Correction, yes, thank you. District Office Pamela M. Pratt. District Office Maria Stabinski. High School Patricia Sisco. Middle School Maureen Shears. Brookside Maureen Strisco. Lenox Nancy Salazzo. Meadow Kathleen Menz. Plaza Karen Manorino. And Steel Deborah Garrity. When we finish this section? We're all, okay. Okay. So next we have special assignments of board members for the 2022-2023 school year. Legislative Representative, I know Mrs. O'Hagan, that's something that you have been doing, is that something you'd like to continue to do?
I'm trying to continue with someone else.
Unless someone else?
That's fine, but I'm happy to continue.
No one else? Okay, so that will be Mrs. O'Hagan. Representative to the Baldwin Teacher Center Policy Board, Mr. Smith, I think you were doing this, is that something you'd like to continue or?
I've done that for a few years. I'm fine with continuing, but if anyone that interests, like, would defer to somebody who wanted to give a try.
All right, does anybody else?
Is it certain day?
They usually meet on, they'll meet at 4:00, 4:30 once a month.
What day do you meet?
Tuesday. Tuesday. And it's always over in a half hour, at least when Tuesday's at a few sheers. And hopefully her place maybe is just in position. No, I mean, I'm good continuing, maybe it's easier because I already know a lot of people. All right, I'll keep going.
Okay. Representative to the Save Committee. I don't remember who was doing that.
I believe that was me. That's the Health and Safety? That was me, I'll continue.
Okay. Liaison to the Baldwin Educational Assembly. Oh, yes, that's right. I, yeah, I don't know why that's still, okay. Liaison to the Baldwin Council of PTAs, I think Karen, or Mrs. Reed?
Nope, that was Mrs. Dreska.
Okay, that was you.
I'd volunteer if Mrs. Dreska was willing to.
This one was a challenge for me because, yeah.
Okay. I get to hang out with my friend Kim. Woo-hoo.
Okay, Liaison to the AIDS Advisory Council. Are you currently? Oh, for this year at all, okay. Okay. Good, okay. What has been suspended? Human Relations?
Yeah.
Is that the only one? Okay, so that will be Mrs. Dreska on the AIDS Advisory Council. Okay, so G has been suspended, so we'll go to H, which is Liaison to the Memorial Scholarship Committee. Is there anybody else that was interested in doing it?
I was, but I mean, if you were, that's all right, you go ahead and take it.
All right, so who's? Okay. I'm sorry, I just can't hear Mrs. Reed very well. Liaison to the Baldwin Foundation for Education. Is that okay with?
So moved.
So moved, yes, okay. Liaison to the Baldwin Civic Association. I know that's something you love, Mr. Smith, but you don't. Oh, wait, no, civic, I'm thinking of chamber, I'm sorry. Yes, that's why, yeah.
Chamber always involves a meal, I'm sorry. Maybe if it's a civic association.
Gave you food. I'll continue civic if that's okay with everyone.
It's a volunteer position, you know, you take all the food you can get.
Okay, so now liaison to the chamber, do you want to keep that, Mr. Smith?
I would love to.
So you can go get your meals?
And on a serious note, it's been very interesting to meet.
Oh, turn your mic on.
On a serious note, it's been very interesting to meet business people in town, business people who are parents. I had lunch with an accountant in town who has three children at Meadow, so it was after we had had the Chamber Commerce Meeting, so it's, I've enjoyed that, so I would like to do that, continue that.
And then Liaison to the Community Coalition of Baldwin. Mrs. Dreska, isn't that you now? Do you want to continue that, or did somebody else want to take that on? Okay. Funny, have.
Ms. Coles?
Yes.
I have a question.
Okay.
Do we need to?
Okay. Maybe that should be shared. Wait, what, okay. Oh, yes, okay. Yes. Okay. Okay, so at the end of this, or at the end of all of the businesses? Okay. Financial Management Regulations relating to Financial Accounting in Union Free School Districts. Commissioners Regulation Number 2052 of the Codes, Rules, and Regulations of New York State. Chief Account Officers of the District: Kathleen Brower, District Treasurer, Jennifer Walsh, Deputy Treasurer, Pamela M. Pratt, District Clerk, Dr. James P. Robinson, Assistant Superintendent for Business and Administrative Services. Persons Responsible for Business Management Functions: Purchasing, Legal Advertising, and Opening of Bids. Dr. James P. Robinson, Assistant Superintendent for Business and Administrative Services. Kathleen Brower, District Treasurer, Jennifer Walsh, Deputy Treasurer, Jill McGrath, Senior Account Clerk, Jacqueline Curtis, Lakeisha Fulton, and Lisa Pages, Account Clerk, Pamela M. Pratt, District Clerk, or any two employees designated by the Superintendent of Schools. Certification of the Payroll: Dr. Sherry Elkami, Dr. Michelle Gallo. Designation of Signature For Cheques: All Capital One Accounts, Kathleen Brower, Jennifer Walsh. High School Student Activity Funds: Patricia Sisco, Dr. Neil Testa, and Dr. Arlene Guerrero. Middle School Student Activity Funds: Michelle Lippi, Dr. Erica Taylor, and Lori McKenzie. Readoption of Policy 6700: Purchasing Relative to Procurements That Are Not Required to Be Publicly Bid Pursuant to Section 104B of the General Municipal Law. Purchasing Agents: Jill McGrath, Dr. James P. Robinson. Transfer of Funds, as may be required during the school year: Dr. James P. Robinson, Jennifer Walsh, and Jill McGrath. Investment of School Funds Pursuant to New York State Education Law, Sections 1723A and 2131. Kathleen Brower, Treasurer, Jennifer Walsh, Deputy Treasurer, Dr. James P. Robinson, Assistant Superintendent for Business and Administrative Services, Jill McGrath, Senior Account Clerk. Person Designated to Apply for Grants and Aid: Dr. Sherry Elkami. Persons Designated to Receive Service of Legal Documents: Pamela M. Pratt. Designation of Official Newspaper: The Baldwin Herald. Other Newspapers to be Used as Needed: The Freeport Baldwin Leader and Newsday. Designation of Bank Depositories for 2022-23: Capital One, NY Class, and NY LAF. Designation of Investment Institution: Cooperative Liquid Asset Security System. Mission Statement, Belief Statement, and Broad Educational Goals. And that is as-is and can be found on the website, is that correct? The mission?
Yes.
Statement, right. So the mission statement, belief statement, and broad educational goals will stay as-is and can be found on the website. Resolution pertaining to Section 18 of the New York State Public Officers' Law. Establishment of Petty Cash Funds, 2022-2023, pursuant to Section 709 of the New York State Education Law. All of the following will receive $75 in petty cash. Superintendent's Office. Business Office. Instructional Office. Human Resources Office. Baldwin High School. Baldwin Middle School. Brookside School. Lenox School. Plaza School. Meadow School. Steel School. Pupil Services Office. District Clerk Office. Facilities and Operations Office. Instructional Technology, CTP. Lit Assessments and Projects. I can't read this. Special Education and Health Office. And Public Information Office. Establishment of Travel Mileage Reimbursement Rate for Approved Travel at $0.58 per mile pursuant to the IRS Statement Released on December 17, 2021. Establishment of Board of Education Meetings and the Annual Meeting. August 10, District Office. September 14, District Office. October 19, Brookside School. November 2, Steel School. December 14, Lenox School. January 18, Plaza School. February 8, District Office. March 8, Meadow School. April 19, District Office. May 10, High School. June 14, High School. Budget Meetings, Hearings, and Vote. February 8, District Office. March 8, District Office. May 3, Annual Budget Hearing, District Office. May 16, Budget Vote and Election at the High School. Boise's Budget Vote, April 18, District Office. Board Membership in the Following Associations: New York State School Board Association, Nassau Suffolk School Board Association, National School Boards Association. Board Membership in the Following Associations: New York State School Board Association, Nassau Suffolk School Board Association, National School Boards Association, Refit, and the Baldwin Chamber of Commerce. Authorization for Board Members to Attend with Expenses Meetings and Conventions of the Following: New York State School Boards Association, Nassau Suffolk School Boards Association, National School Boards Association, American Association of School Administrators, Association for Supervision and Curriculum Development, Refit, Baldwin Chamber of Commerce, Nassau Suffolk Bar Association, and Scope. Dignity for All Students: DASSA Coordinators; District Office: Dr. Michelle Gallo, Dr. Anthony Manella; High School: Dr. Neil Testa, Dr. Arlene Guerrero, and Dr. Ricky Papadandria; Middle School: Andrew Di Napoli and Dr. Erica Taylor; Brookside School: Anne Marie Scoccherini; Lenox School: Dr. Sheila Jefferson Isaac; and Plaza School: Mark Ray.
We're going.
Yeah. Meadow School: Dr. Yolanda Martin; Steel School: Ms. Navaya Paz. I don't have them memorized yet, I'm sorry. Yes.
Well, Ms. Reed, did you have a question before, or no? Okay. Control Officer for Bloodborne Pathogens, was that there before? It was always there, okay. And then my other, just general question. For the special assignments, have we discussed, like, if there's low attendance or certain parameters where it doesn't... We don't feel like our presence is needed there, or putting things on suspension? I'm just curious, how does that process happen? We just send you a message? I'm asking, I don't know...
Are you asking about the two that were suspended, or are you talking about policies in general?
No, in general, the ones that are currently not suspended, if we have that thought.
Well, I think, I mean, I'm going to assume that the ones that were suspended were for that reason, that there was very little to no attendance.
Right, so do I, let's say for me, I just let you know, listen, I'm the only one there, do I need to still... Do we need to still be a part of this? That's what I'm asking. How do you want that done?
So I guess we, that would just be a discussion if that's what you're finding.
Okay.
You know, bring it to us, and that will be a discussion.
Right, because they have asked us to be a part of this, correct? Is that how it works?
Yes.
For the ones that are currently...
It's a board responsibility, so as Sue said, I think, you know, if that came up, then we should be talking about it as a board.
All right, we'll do... Thank you.
I have a couple of questions, Sue, I don't know if this is the time.
You have questions?
Yeah, about this part. The mission statement and educational goals, does anyone know when that was last reviewed? And whether there's some basic rotation, you know, in the sense of, you know, when or how often?
Yeah, that's what I thought. I thought we did it relatively recently.
Okay. Okay.
Okay. Was it, or are we thinking of priorities?
We did do the mission statement at least within the past two years. The belief statement, I'm not sure, but we did, or maybe we did all of them at the same time, but I...
I believe we did all within the last years, the last two years.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. And my other question is, the purchasing, the re-adoption of the purchasing policy. My question is, have there been changes? It's a very lengthy policy and very length, has a lot of lengthy procedures. Have there been substantial changes, or is this a re-adoption of something that has been in place for?
It is a re-adoption, and it is the policy that has all of the thresholds that we follow and so on.
But we haven't changed, there's been no changes to it, appreciate it. Okay, thank you.
There are a number of policies that the board has to re-adopt every single year, and that's...
By regulation.
By regulation, right, and that's one of them, and no, there haven't been any changes to it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so amended vote for Section 1, correct? So now we will need a revote for Section 1 as we assigned the board members their groups that they will be a part of, so... Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Reed, seconded by Mr. Smith. Any questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor? Aye. Okay. The Board of Education accepts the minutes of the Board of Education Meetings held on June 8, June 15, and June 23, 2022, as detailed in the Friday mailing.
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Reed, seconded by Mr. Smith. All those in favor? Aye. The Board of Education acknowledges receipt of the Treasurer's Report for the month of May 2022, as detailed in the Friday mailing.
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Reed, seconded by Mr. Smith. All those in favor? Aye. Okay, I will now turn it over to Dr. Cami for comments and reports.
I don't have any report. I just want to, you know, thank everybody for their support over the last school year, which was a very difficult year for not only Baldwin, but every school system around the country. And we're looking forward to a more normal start and a back-to-normal school year next year, which we're all feeling very encouraged by. Just a happy 4th of July to everybody.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Cami. Liaison Reports. Who would like to start us on reports? Mrs. O'Hagan?
Yes, thank you. The Nassau Suffolk School Boards Association hosted a dinner for newly-elected board members, and we've done that every year for the past several years, and it really is a very... We found it to be very, very useful in terms of kind of getting people off on the right foot. It's, it was always held after they're elected, but before they're actually sworn in. So it was really terrific. There were about 30 new board members that attended this year, and it was, it was very effective. And I just want to mention in passing that I attended the retirement dinner for Lorraine Deller, who was a longtime board member in Baldwin. She served on the school board for 18 years. She then moved on to head up other educational organizations and eventually was the Director of the Nassau Suffolk School Boards Association. So she's Baldwin resident. We're very proud of her. And I attended graduations at Meadow School, one at the middle school, and the high school. And if I can say, the speeches were extraordinary. They were very uplifting, particularly those at the high school. The speeches by the valedictorian and the salutatorian really, I know, the valedictorian's speech brought me to tears. It was really wonderful. She focused on joy, and it was terrific. Anyway, that's it.
Thank you very much, Mrs. O'Hagan. Mrs. Reed?
Sure. So we had our final Health and Safety meeting, and Mr. Randa so quickly ran over, or went over the different projects that are coming up for the summer. And it was really, not only, other than moving, we talked about the window project that's going to be happening at Plaza, and the elevator project that will be happening at Steel. Attended the varsity sports award dinners. Since our last meeting, very well-attended. I mean, and the kids are great. I also was at the moving-up ceremony for Steel in our graduation from high school, and I will tell you that even though it's such a busy time of the year for us at this time of the year, now we're kind of on the downside of it, but it's kind of like the most important part of the year because everything that we've done, all the decisions, all the hirings, everything that has taken place throughout the course of the year culminates in these events. And so it was, it's, like I said, it's very busy, and when you're working like overnight and you're trying to struggle to stay up, but it's important to be at these events because, like I said, it's why we're here. So it was a pleasure.
Thank you. Mrs. Dreska?
Yes. Ditto what Mrs. Reed said in terms of fact that the year is closing. Congratulations to the graduates. I also attended Brookside Moving Ceremony, one because I had to. My son graduated. And the other part is, like, my last year at Brookside after three children, but it's always great to participate in the elementary school because you see them at elementary school, and I saw some of them graduate this year at the high school. I mean, it's always a beauty to see going through our Baldwin Public Education, where they go and just kind of following their path. So to what you said, it's great to just close out the year and see where our kids are going, but all good. And enjoy your summer, everyone, because I doubt we'll see you guys at the August meeting, but enjoy.
Thank you. Mr. Smith?
I too got to the high school. Great, great speeches. What a wonderful night. And being able to look those kids in the eye and congratulate them and hand them their diplomas, it's one of the joys of this job. And the other one was, I don't, I don't think I've been on the board long enough to go to a elementary moving-up live. And I got to go to Lennox's, and it was just made my whole day. These beautiful, smart, bright kids getting their awards, and they're so well-behaved. And then they sing their Lennox song. I mean, choked up. And that's, that's another wonderful benefit of being on the board. You get a front-row seat at the moving-up ceremony at the elementary school. Because I remember waiting in line at Plaza. That was, that was tense, you know? Also, Chamber of Commerce, we had a nice meeting at Basil Leaf Grill, and Judy Griffin came and spoke about a lot of issues that are going on, town of Hempstead issues, and the Baldwin Downtown revitalization. It's great to get to hear from the politicians directly. At the BTA, that's one of my responsibilities, the BTC, Baldwin Teacher Center. They, we've just, we interviewed and then chose a new director, chairperson, not sure. And looking forward to wishing this fellow luck in running the BTC. Lot of acronyms around here. And that's, that's all I got. Thanks, folks.
Thank you. I was also honored to attend the retirement dinner for Lorraine Deller. I have to say, she was herself, and Mrs. O'Hagan, probably the first two faces that I became very familiar with when my kids started school and all through their school years, and that inspired me to get involved and to know what's going on and try to contribute. So as I said, it was a great honor to be there for her retirement dinner, and it was just a beautiful night. Great, great stories. I too was able to attend the varsity sports awards, and that's, that's always a great evening. And the kids are very proud, as they should be, and it's, it's a wonderful event to be able to go to. And of course, the high school graduation, that was a beautiful evening. We couldn't have asked for better weather, thank goodness. And I think it all went off without a hitch. Thank goodness, that was, that was great. And as far as Baldwin Civic Association, it really, just two things right now. Their main focus is still, you know, what's going on with the overlay and the DRI and with the town of Hempstead, and there's a lot of meetings that they're attending, and there's just a lot going on with that, but nothing specific to report yet. The community garden, I don't know if you guys are all familiar with the community garden. It's so beautiful. But they really need volunteers to just, you don't have to sign up anywhere or anything, just show up and pull some weeds, or pick up some garbage, or take your lawnmower there, because it's all a volunteer basis. And there doesn't seem to be a lot of volunteers, you know, taking up those tasks at this time, and I know it's really needed. So, you know, if you ever have an afternoon free and you have nothing else to do, imagine that. Go do some more work at the Baldwin Community Garden, but it's much appreciated. And that's, that's all I have.
I did forget that both Mrs. Coles and I attended the graduation at Stewart School. And that, I just want to mention that because it's our alternative program, and it... These are students who have struggled for one reason or another, so that their accomplishment is always very poignant. And the commitment of the teachers and the principal there is just amazing and outstanding. And I just had to say, we were there. It was a wonderful experience.
Yes, thank you for reminding me. Yes, as I've said in the past, I don't like to go to that event because I always have to bring a bunch of tissue. And you know you're just going to sit there and tear up. You know, these things are always moving, but, you know, as Mrs. O'Hagan said, for one reason or another, these are students that the traditional way of schooling just didn't work for, and they are very proud of themselves when that day comes, and you can see it on their faces, and it truly is an honor to see that. Thank you. Okay, so if anybody here wanted to make any comments or has any questions, there were cards in the back for you to fill out. Do we have cards, Mrs. Pratt? The online, okay. So we received a few comments/questions online from Mrs. Melissa Watts. And so I will address, she had written, "Please let us know when our Board of Ed can have open discussion with community." So I want to say a couple of things about that. First and foremost, Dr. Cami is going to be doing just that over the summer. She has designated three dates. That will be July 20, August 3, and August 17, from 9:30 to 10:30 in the morning, to just have kind of a coffee talk, you know, with anybody that has questions or concerns or would just like to sit down, you know, with her and have a conversation. So that is one way that that will be done. And the other thing I want to say about that is, I'm sure that most of you will remember, for a very long time, the school district did know your, not know your school nights.
Community input meetings.
I have a Swiss cheese brain. Community input meetings, twice a year, and that really was the purpose for them. And, you know, you have to remember that events like that, you have to pay the staff, and you know, the building is open, and we would always ask additional staff, such as teachers, to attend that. So if there were questions or information needed from them, they would be there, and the community wasn't. You'd have a couple people, and so those, those events ceased happening. You know, could that be something discussed in the future? I suppose it could be discussed, but there's, there's no point in us doing these things if the community is not going to come. We welcome communication with the community, but, you know, people have to, have to attend. So that's, that's what I'll say about that. She had also asked a question about where you can see the budget, and that is certainly on the website, always, for all to see. And I'm sure Mrs. Watts is watching, and there were, was quite an extensive letter about many different things, and so a follow-up communication will be done in regards to that. Okay, did somebody else, did you have something and you weren't able to fill out a card? Can you just go to the podium, please? Yes, and just give us your... Can you just go to the podium, please? Yes. And just give us your, your name and your address. And all questions and comments are limited to three minutes.
No, I just want to, oh, Waiters Square, my name. You have some dates scheduled for 9:30 in the morning?
Yes.
I was just wondering if it was possible to have one of those dates changed to like 6:00 PM for people who were.
Thank you. Someone else had actually asked that question as well. And that is a discussion that can be had. And certainly, if that's able to happen, you will all know it right away. Okay. Okay. Excuse me. The Board of Education approves the actions of the Superintendent of Schools as Board of Education Executive Officer to the Committee on Special Education, SubCSE, the Committee on Preschool Special Education, and 504 Committee for Services in January, February, March, April, May, and June 2022, as detailed in the Friday mailing.
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Reed, seconded by Mrs. Dreska. All those in favor?
Aye.
The Board of Education approves the home tutoring and special education service reports as detailed in the Friday mailing.
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Reed, seconded by Mrs. O'Hagan. All those in favor?
Aye.
The Board of Education adopts the resolution provided by the Nassau County Legislature and Board of Assessors authorizing a tax levy in the amount of $106,412,079 and further, that each board member be authorized to sign the document for submission to the appropriate agencies as detailed in the Friday mailing.
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Reed, seconded by Mr. Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
The Board of Education accepts a donation with thanks from the Herman Auerbach Memorial Trust Fund in the amount of $35,000 to support professional development, curriculum enrichment, and innovative programming in Baldwin schools, as approved by the Superintendent of Schools, as detailed in the, in the mailing. Moved by Mr. Smith?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Reed. All those in favor?
Wait, wait, I have a question.
So I would like to just say some.
What? I had a question. I was going to ask, is that an increase? Or has it been 35, a flat 35?
So the number varies from time to time, but the accumulated total is over half a million dollars.
Yeah, we've gotten from.
From them, right.
Yeah.
But I was just curious if this was.
Yeah. Every year, we get money from this organization.
It's a package deal.
So Herman Auerbach, the Herman Auerbach Fund is run by the family of Herman Auerbach. And their purpose is really to support innovative work in schools.
Okay.
And that is, we don't apply. We are just on their designated list.
They're aware of what we're doing.
Yeah. So from, from beginning to end, we've received over a half a million dollars from this organization.
Right.
And what Dr. Kami is modestly not saying is that it was a package deal. Someone that she's done work with. And so with her came this memorial, this trust, or this, I'm sorry, donation annually. So I thank you for having connections to help us. What are we going to do when you retire? Or she's not allowed to retire?
Okay. As Board President, I'm calling for consideration of a, oh, I thought that we, no, we did vote on it. And then we made the comments.
We didn't vote.
We did. Anyway, we can vote again. Okay. We did vote, but we can do it again. Moved by? Right. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. As Board President, I'm calling for consideration of a consent agenda for business items two, three, yes, sorry, three through 29. Are there any items that members would care to withdraw from consideration under the consent agenda for further discussion and a separate vote? Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, including business items two through, or three through 29? Moved by Mr. Smith? Seconded by Mrs. Dreska. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Do I have a motion to approve business items three through 29? Moved by Mrs. Reed?
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
The Board of Education approves the agreement with Industrial UI Services for the period from July 1st, 2021 through December 31st, 2022, specializing in the evaluation, ongoing monitoring, and protest hearing representation for the unprecedented increase in claims due to the pandemic, at a fee of $835 every three months, as detailed in the mailing. Moved by Mrs. O'Hagan?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Smith. Are there any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
The Board of Education approves the updated use of facilities reports for June of 2022 and July 2022 through June 2023, as detailed in the Friday mailing.
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Reed? Seconded by Mrs. O'Hagan. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The Board of Education has a first read of the following policies, as detailed in the Friday mailing. Policy 0110, sexual harassment. Policy 1400, public complaints. And policy 1405, complaints about certain federally funded programs. As this is a first read, we do not need to vote on these.
I would like to ask a question, though.
Okay.
Once again, are these changed in any way from what we have previously, what the policies have read in previous years?
Yeah, they, they all have mostly minor edits. When you receive the policies, there's a cover letter on there that, that will tell you what the changes are. So this is a first read of those policies.
So we will get the cover letter when it's time to vote?
Yes, you should have gotten it in the last.
Really? Okay, maybe I missed it.
I will double check though.
Okay, I could have missed it. Okay. But they're essentially the same. There's just some minor edits?
Yeah. So what will change in these are changes in the law. And so we have, as you know, we've redone the entire policy book. And so we're in the phase now where we're going back and redoing the ones that we had redone. So we're in a really good place in terms of the cycle. But we will get notification from New York State School Boards Association about either newly mandated policies or changes in the policies. And when we get either of those, in addition to the normal cycle of policy review, we contact the attorneys to make sure that it's legally correct. We will distribute it amongst anybody in the school system that has any relationship to those policies at all. So for example, you know, sexual harassment, will we make sure it goes through HR as well? And then you will get the revised policy with a cover that has all of, any of the changes. But I'm going to check to make sure that you receive that cover.
Thank you.
The Board of Education reviews the following policies, as detailed in the Friday mailing. Policy 9240, personnel evaluations, observations. Policy 5100, attendance. Policy 4526.1, internet safety. Policy 1900, parent and family involvement. And policy 6240, investments. And we vote on.
Review? Or we don't vote on review?
Yeah, because they're required annually. So you have to vote.
Okay, the same questions. Have they effectively changed the recruiting and hiring, for instance? Those are very long policies. And I'm, I'm curious if there has been, and I'm also curious if things like parent engagement, which goes on for a very long time. I know that they are posted on the website. But is there something, a document, that's a little more accessible and readable? And how is it distributed?
So the family engagement policy, there is a shortened version on the calendar. And that parent engagement policy is directly related to schools that fall under Title I. And so in addition to the full policy, the amended version that's in the calendar, there's multiple meetings over the course of the year with representatives of Title I schools to go over what's in the policy, what's covered by Title I funding. The attendance policy, I know, is another one that was asked. And there is a shortened version of that. There were no changes made to that. The shortened version is in the calendar. So one of the reasons we have so many pages of text in the calendar is anything that is either required for our parents to know, there is always a shortened version, or the full version, if it fits, in, in the calendar.
It's just, I, I don't want to belabor this. It's just that I think that some of these things need to be accessible to a parent, looking through and just wanting to understand the general idea of how some of these policies operate, especially the ones that are directly related to their responsibility.
Sorry, I, I have personal box now.
Oh. Thanks. It will be finished soon.
Every last week.
And I, but the one on attendance, for instance, I wondered if that had been altered because of the pandemic? And how, you know, with remote learning and all of that, was that altered in any way?
So there was one additional paragraph that was added about remote learning last July. And there is a shortened version of that in the calendar.
Okay.
Just a quick little follow-up question, dealing with the calendar. The calendar's sent to all families? Is the calendar sent to all taxpayers?
All taxpayers.
Oh, great. Thanks.
It's sent to all residents.
All residents. Okay.
Okay. And ditto for internet safety, that too. I'm just asking this because we've had such a unique couple of years. And those are things that directly impact the schools.
Yeah. And so one of the things that our schools will do on a new student orientation, when the parents come, they will go over some of those with the, so they'll go over code of conduct, they'll go over things like internet safety. Those are part of their regular orientation program.
Okay.
So just to wrap this, close this out. So Mrs. O'Hagan is asking if this is on the website. It is on the website? Or we're seeing abbreviated versions?
All of our policies.
Right, that's what I thought. So you mentioned abbreviated versions.
It's in the calendar.
Oh, you're saying the abbreviated versions are in the printed calendar?
And I am looking at what went to the board on the three new policies. And it does say specifically what it replaces, what's deleted. And like in one particular instance, there was a new policy that was added. It says it has been completely reformulated. So that would be one you have to read from beginning to end, because it's either a new policy or been completely redone. All three of those policies that you're looking at, the sexual harassment, the public complaints, complaints about, let's see. So policy 0110, sexual harassment includes policy, it, it is long because it, it now includes multiple policies from the previous policy book as one. And that is outlined in the cover letter that you received.
Does anybody have anything else?
Well, I have a question for you. For you. And that is, do you feel that the way that it's being sent to the board does not, is not specific enough in what the changes are? I think these are unique because these policies are like complete redos. So these are ones you'd really have to read from beginning to end. But if you think that it's not giving you enough information to, so that you know what's new in the policy, we can be more deliberate about that.
I would personally like that. But I, my motivation in this, really, our primary responsibility as a board is the formulation of policy. And if we're just, you know, not having any conversation at all, I think that it's, it's, it's not giving clarity to the public and, and sometimes just to ourselves about what, and this is our primary responsibility, is the setting of policy. So even alerting us individually in a mailing about changes is not enough. I would like to, you know, just alert everyone viewing the meeting and one another that we should be having these conversations. We should be at least talking about if there are changes, why there are, what we should be doing about it. That's, that's my only motivation.
And to piggyback, I mean, we're not trying to get into the weeds of, of the details of it. But it is, I mean, I don't feel comfortable approving something that I've really not either, A, had the adequate time, or the adequate notification. I mean, I don't want to say adequate, but where I'm, I have questions, I think, about what has taken place with the policy.
Sometimes I don't even understand what that really, what it means in practice. And that's fine. The policies that you're being asked to approve, that 0110, 141405, is in a memo that you received on June 14th. So you've had it for two weeks.
Well, those are first reads. So we're not going to approve those.
Absolutely. So, yeah. And so let's discuss it in public.
Well, those are first reads. So, I mean, we can discuss them. But I'm just saying that we're not approving those. The ones that we're approving are the ones below.
Yes.
I agree. I mean, I think you brought a great point. I think we've just kind of been going with the flow. So it wouldn't, it is our role, so we should do that. Are you proposing that when it's at the first read, that we come with the conversation at, for that meeting? Or when it comes to the place of the next round, when we're ready to approve?
You have to do it in the first read, because the first read, then if there are edits.
Then they go do the edits. You're correct.
Correct, correct, correct.
So we should do that. So this would be the opportunity for us to do that for at least these three. And number nine. I didn't prepare to do that now, honestly. So if you want to propose that, maybe we hold off and do it for the next meeting? Is that what?
Well, those three are not.
I know that. But I think what Mrs. O'Hagan is saying, we didn't bring our conversations or questions up, or any notes, if any, to have the discussion now. So.
And that's partially because we received about 700 pages to read on June 14th. So.
Right. Right. So maybe we pull this off to the next one, with the understanding that going forward, whenever we do a first read, it's not just approved, but we say, okay, what are your thoughts around this one, this one, and this one?
So can I make a suggestion that you allow the first read? And then if there are questions or if there's edits, that when it comes to the vote, you hold off on the vote? This at least allows us to keep moving it forward. If there are things unresolved on that, we can always pull it from the agenda on the next meeting.
So keep the flow, because it's already here? And then in August, be prepared to bring up whatever we.
Right. And then if there are things.
Going forward, whenever there's a next round, we should be prepared at the first read?
That's what I would recommend.
Okay. I don't know how everyone else feels, but I'm okay with that.
That makes sense to me.
Possibly, this could be the subject of a workshop at some point, right?
But they're, but we're doing it every meeting. It's at every meeting, we had, we're doing a first read.
But I mean, to just sit down and have conversations about ones, let's say that, you know.
But Mrs. O'Hagan's point you're saying is we should be doing that conversation out loud, publicly.
See, I, I like the idea of doing that in public. I understand that nobody likes to have very, very lengthy meetings. But I really think because that's our primary responsibility, that we need to have these conversations publicly. And it's fine. I mean, it's, it's, you know, it's fine to have agreements, disagreements, or whatever. And to talk about publicly which things are actually delineated by law, that are not something that we can change. And the ones that are local policies that are tailored specifically to Baldwin.
Right. So I understand what she's saying about discussing it to an extent at a meeting, but, you know, to, just an idea. It just might be an idea to, you know, where we can just focus on that at a particular time.
It just might be an idea to, you know, where we can just focus on that at a particular time, policies in general. Okay. Board of Education reviews the following policies as detailed in the Friday mailing: Policy 9240 Personal Evaluations Observations, Policy 5100 Attendance, Policy 4526.1 Internet Safety, Policy 1900 Parent and Family Involvement, and Policy 6240 Investments.
I just want to point out, these are annually required. So these are not new, and there are no significant changes to any of them.
Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Reed.
Seconded.
Seconded by Ms. Dereska. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The Board of Education approves that access to student records will be limited to certified staff, clerical staff as necessary, the school district physician, and the law firm of Ingraham and Smith School District Council.
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Reed. Seconded by Mr. Smith. All those in favor?
Wait, I have a question. So is this not part of a policy in terms of who access? I mean, I know we deal with this every year, but isn't this school board policy as to who has access to the student records?
It is, but it has to be approved at a yearly meeting to be very clear about who has access to that.
Who has access, absolutely.
I think also because we may change the law firm, so that's why we have to say out loud who the firm is. Whereas in the policy, we don't, we're not specific to the firm. Correct, with the physician as well.
Got you, but the school, it says school district physician, it doesn't say the name of her.
But the law firm.
But to your point, okay, I'm good. I just wanted to make sure, I thought it was policy.
Yeah, at first I was like, yeah, you're right, but then I'm like, oh, it's specific to the firm, too.
I mean, it's required for us to approve, it's not a problem. I just wanted to ask the question out loud. Thank you.
And Ms. Reed, I apologize. I can't see you very well, so when you do this, I don't know, and I can't hear you very well. So I apologize that I've missed you when you have a couple of questions. So just, you know, whatever, so... You're not usually one to be missed, so I apologize. The Board of Education approves the following resolution. Whereas...
Did we vote? I'm sorry, with us questioning, did we vote? No, right? Yeah, we did vote, okay.
The Board of Education approves the following resolution: Whereas Section 135.4(c)(7)II(IV) of the Regulations of the Commissioner of Education provides for a Board of Education to permit pupils in grades no lower than seventh grade to compete on interscholastic athletic teams organized for senior high school pupils or senior high school pupils to compete on interscholastic athletic teams organized for pupils in the seventh and eighth grade. And whereas these pupils are to be placed at levels of competition appropriate to their physiological maturity, physical fitness, and skills in relationship to other pupils in accordance with the standards established by the Commissioner of Education. And whereas the State Education Department issues the standards for these pupils to compete under a program called the Athletic Placement Process. Therefore, be it resolved that the Baldwin Union Free School District Board of Education shall permit student, pupils to compete under the Athletic Placement Process, all sports, and limits this participation to varsity-level sports only. Moved by Mr. Smith.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Reed. Are there any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The Board of Education approves a partnership with the Instructional Coaching Group to provide professional development with teachers and coaches in the Educator Residency Program and administrators on the Impact Cycle of Instructional Coaching Year to assist the coaches and administrators, support teachers to improve their quality of instruction, and will be paid by our Title II grant as detailed in the Friday mailing. Moved by Mr. Smith. Seconded by Ms. O'Hagan. Are there any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The Board of Education approves the Annual Professional Performance Review Plan Resolution as follows: Whereas the Baldwin Union Free School District had an approved Annual Professional Performance Review, APPR, plan in place effective for the 2022-2023 school year, whereas the State Education Department requires that the district submit an implementation certification form regarding the status of its APPR plan for the 2022-2023 school year. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Baldwin Union Free School District Board of Education hereby authorizes the execution of the district's 2022-2023 APPR Implementation Certification Form by the President of the Board of Education and the Superintendent of Schools. Be it further resolved that the Board of Education authorizes the Superintendent of Schools or her designee to submit this form to the State Education Department.
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Reed. Seconded by Mr. Smith. Are there any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The Board of Education approves the Shared Decision-Making Plan as detailed in the Friday mailing. Moved by Ms. O'Hagan.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Dereska. Are there any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The shared decision-making. The Board of Education approves the Revised District Guidance Plan as modified and reviewed by a committee comprised of teachers, school counselors, and administrators for the 2022-2023 school year as detailed in the Friday mailing.
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Reed. Seconded by Mr. Smith. Are there any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The Board of Education approves a Contract Literacy Strategies Consulting Group to provide professional learning support to our literacy goals in grades three through five and explicit professional learning that supports literacy instruction for teachers in grades three through five and add teachers in grade six for the 2022-2023 school year funded through the CRSA and APR grants as detailed in the Friday mailing.
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Reed. Seconded by Ms. O'Hagan. Are there any questions?
Just one, clarifying. Can you remind me what CRSA? I forgot to look it up, and then I see it again.
Those are the additional federal funds that we got during the pandemic. Do you remember what it stands for?
Okay, but it's through that. Okay, but it's through that. That's fine.
And this...
Okay, okay.
And this is to address, is this addressing learning loss, or is this just in support of?
It's in support of all students.
Okay.
So we're getting it again, so it's continuing?
No, so we received a certain amount of money two years ago that we had a certain amount of time to use. It was extended by a year, so we're using it. You can use it for professional development, and that's what we're using it for, at least part of it.
So it's the same fund that we received being used? Thank you, that's what I was...
You're just approving its use.
Got it, thanks, okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The Board of Education approves the resolution for Baldwin Union Free School District to accept the settlement offer in the lawsuit brought against the district by Dominic Baldi, as detailed in the mailing. Moved by Mr. Smith. Seconded by Ms. Dereska. All those in favor? Aye. The Board of Education approves the resolution for Baldwin Union Free School District to accept the settlement agreement in connection with the lawsuit brought against the district by Baumann Bus Company, Inc., and Acme Bus Corp., and to authorize the President of the Board of Education to execute this agreement as detailed in the mailing.
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Reed. Seconded by Ms. O'Hagan. And is there any discussion or questions? You can't. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, is there anything that anyone has under other? No? Okay. Can I get a motion, please, to adjourn the meeting? Moved by Ms. Dereska.
I'll second.
Seconded by Ms. Reed. Did you have something else?
No, I just was wondering if you were gonna announce the date for our next board meeting.
If you have it in front of you, go ahead.
No, I don't have it.
August 8th will be our next board meeting. Thank you.
Okay, I'm good.
Can we, if we haven't given the dates to Ms. Pratt or Ms. Coles, I just need to know the date for our retreat sooner than later because I have a lot of work schedules and traveling that I have to do, so it would be great just to lock that down sooner than later. Thank you.
We have dates that work on two calendars. Were, did we send something to the board yet?
Yes, I'm just waiting to hear from everybody.
Okay, so everybody needs to respond to the, did you do it as a poll?
It was an email and a poll.
Right, and it was August 8th, and then two for October, right? October 19th and October 20th, plus year. So, okay. That would be, I haven't responded either because I was looking at what was happening on the 8th.
I'm just asking only because I may potentially have a conflict, so the sooner I get it, then I can probably push it out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Everybody enjoy your summer until we see you again, and thank you for joining us today.